The appointed time has arrived and that we have quorum. The chair opens up the Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, meeting of the Mashpee Plinney Board, 7:00 PM. We're meeting at Mashpee Town Hall, Requiem Room. In the Requiem Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. We're being broadcast live on local channels 8 and 1072, and the meeting is being recorded. It's being streamed live on Mashpee, Town and Mashpee website, www.mashpema.gov/channeleight. There is a Zoom link on this agenda. The Zoom meeting ID is 910-1857-7453, and the password is 223899. Again, meeting ID 910-1857-7453, passcode 223899. And does it, do we have anybody else besides Rob on Zoom?
I don't see anybody.
Okay, all right, good, you can see. All right, so I'd like to open up the meeting by roll call vote, just because Rob is remoting in. So just say your name and that you're here.
Karen Falkner, present.
Mike Richardson, present.
Dennis Bowser, any present.
Dale Oakley, present.
Rob?
Rob Hanson, present.
And Mary Wagan, present. And I'd like to invite everybody to stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. We, I think we already, on approval of minutes, I think we already approved the March 5th. I think we're on March 19th, so what I'm going to do is, is table that till the next meeting.
Okay. I think you're right.
And if you have any comments, well, Chrissy was right. Chrissy, love me now. And if you have any comments, get them to Brian, who will forward them to Chrissy. Or I think everybody has Chrissy's email, if you want to save some time before the next meeting. Okay. We don't have any public hearings. I just want to let everybody know that the chair will recognize you for public comment on any agenda item. Does everybody have a copy of the agenda? Okay? If, if, you know, just let me know if you want to speak, okay? No public hearings, yay! We got through two applications, so bravo for us. Next one is the Board Engineer, Engineering, excuse me, Board Engineer Report, which our town planner, Brian Tobin, will give to us.
Yeah, very good. So Ed Pesci was not able to make it this evening, so he did send an email to myself and the chair.
Excuse me, Brian, could you speak up a little bit?
Absolutely. Is that better?
Real close, yes, yeah.
Yeah, great. So I was saying that Ed Pesci, who's the town engineer, was not able to make it this evening, so he did send an email summarizing the inspections that he conducted to both myself and the chair. As I'm not an engineer, I'll just go ahead and read it verbatim, and these are Ed's words. Regarding Osprey Court, the drainage infrastructure construction is 90% completed/installed and inspected. Next week, they will work on the sewer lines internal to the development and possibly also start placing the gravel-based material in preparation for binder paving. The site is stable with no erosion issues. On 474 Main/31 Ashumet, the drainage system in the bottom of the detention basin is 80% completed, with all of the leaching pits and crushed stones satisfactorily installed. They are waiting for the liner material to arrive, so they can proceed with the rain garden construction and inlet piping work. The building foundation is completed and backfilled, and they are waiting for the building construction to start. They are also finishing the construction of a landscape burn along the property line with the existing landscape business. The site is stable with no erosion issues. So that's all. And he asks if any of the board members have any questions, feel free to submit them to him.
I still don't know why they could have come off at 1:30. If you look at the project now, they're right with the driveway of the landscaping company, and they could have put, come right into there instead of, they could have got that first building that they wanted. If you drive by there, look at it. That's where the foundation is, and you say, and they're, I asked them to do that, and they didn't do it.
But they can't do it now, when I was over.
So I just have to know, I'm accusing myself from this matter.
Look, I don't know. I mean, go, drive by, Mike, and just tell me what you think of, what it looks like. It's like, why couldn't they do that? But that's just my opinion on that project.
Okay. All right, old business, Aquay Highlands Tripartite Agreement Release. So there's some materials in the packet, which I'd like Brian to go through. He has some correspondence from, some information from Jacques Moran, who asked us to put this on the agenda, but I'll let Brian address that.
Sure. So just to kind of refresh the board's recollection of this project, this is off of Blue Castle Drive, and it was, I believe, approximately 10 units that were put in. And this was a project that had approximately four units on the way beforehand, or, and it had effectively an old dirt road. There was part of, like, crowning on the road that, that still remains, but there were kind of a lot of potholes and ditches on the road. Per the plans that were approved by this board, the applicant, which is Jacques, through his corporate entity, was only required to pave that portion of the road that the units he was constructing were on, as well as the intersection in the road for Carriage Street. So the context of that, as I'm sure most of you recall, but perhaps for members of the public, and just to refresh everybody's recollection, is that a number of the folks who lived on the way did not initially want it paved, because they liked the dirt road feel and the dirt road charm. Different folks had different reasons. Some people also believed it would help slow down traffic, et cetera. So that's why the area where the new units are built is paved. There's basically, when you first turn on to Blue Castle Drive, there's about 10 to 15 feet of paving that goes past the first two houses that are right there at the main intersection. Then there's probably, I'd say it's like approximately 300 yards of this kind of more of a dirt road feel with some crowning left from a bit of an antiquated paving job. Then there's the new pavement that circles around down Carriage Street, but if you were to continue and not make the right under Carriage, it then eventually becomes a dirt road again. So that's the context of the project and the road. This tripartite agreement was set up to ensure that both the, the road situation, as well as the drainage situation, was adequately mitigated by the applicant. I believe there's something about, like, there was a wholeback from the bank of approximately $90,000, maybe it was like about $89,000. The applicant then took care of a number of these items, and Ed created a punch list. The applicant went before this board when Evan Lear was the town planner, towards the beginning of his transition into other endeavors. And this board voted to approve the release of the tripartite agreement, subject to a $2,000 surety payment. And the purpose of the surety payment that was expressed in the vote was number two on an email of punch list items that Ed Pesci, the town engineer, had sent out. That number two dealt with effectively the vegetation and the seeding of the swales on Carriage, I'm forgetting if it's Carriage Street or Carriage Road.
Carriage Road.
Road, thank you. And so that's, that was the, in effect, the essence of the need for a $2,000 payment. There was discussion by this board about attractive nuisances in the dirt piles, which still remain on kind of the empty lots on Carriage Road, but that wasn't actually a part of the vote. So the vote was limited just to this condition number two in Ed's memo, which dealt with the swales. So that's basically, that brings you forward to July 17th of this past year. Then Tom Fadala was functioning as the acting planning consultant, and on 11/6, he had the board sign the release, but he was going to hold it in escrow until the $2,000 surety was received. That $2,000 surety still hasn't been received. Apparently, there, it appears there's some sort of miscommunication between either the town engineer or the board, so it would probably be a good idea to have the town engineer in front of the board. I did try and iron out some of this communication, miscommunication with Jacques in advance of this meeting. Ultimately, in the end, he thought it would be best to hold off until the town engineer is at the meeting, so that the board can ask any questions that they may feel fit of the, of the town engineer. He also, or no, one other data point is also that Ed, the town engineer, is not going to be here live at the next meeting, but he will be here on Zoom. So it may be best to, like, flesh everything out when Ed's here. But I'm happy to answer any questions or walk you through any of the other materials in the packet, if you guys feel it's necessary.
So in our packet is the blank tripartite agreement release, the signed tripartite agreement, the special permit decision. The minutes of July 17th, 2024.
As well as November 6th.
Where we, where we voted the $2,000 cash surety. And that's because of the seeding.
Yeah, I mean, I went there today. It looks like they did some work on the two swales that are up there, the grass row there at the end. One was raked out, and I don't know if it was grass seed or fertilizer, it was white pebble, like fertilizer put down on the first one. The second one, that's attached that one, they've graded out, but they didn't put no seed. But the sides of them, I know it's still early, but a lot of it looks dead, the grass. I mean, I looked at it, some, you can see some green on some of them.
Yeah, the grass sides, it is definitely still early. It is definitely, I'd be more concerned about the bottom of the swales.
Well, the bottom, he needs, there's no grass in them. The other two on the top, up on Blue Castle, where it meets, it has grass on the bottom. The only thing wrong with that one, there's all cardboard sitting on the bottom. There's a lot of leaves that are just above the catch basins, you know, big piles, so when it rains, those leaves cover where it drains. And there's a couple of branches in the bottom of it. I don't know who takes care of cleaning them out once a year, getting the leaves out of them, if it's association.
So it's supposed to be the homeowners association, which is still under Jacques Moran's, Moran's, excuse me, name. So.
But that's my opinion. I mean, the first two need to be seeded, you know, with that hydro seed or something.
Yeah, so when you mentioned the second one, is that the one on Carriage Road and DeGrasse, or the one on?
Blue Castle and Carriage Road.
On Blue Castle and Carriage?
Yeah, the top one. Those two, they look a lot, they have grass on the bottom and everything. But I still like, it's kind of early, I want to make sure that grass comes up. They may have to throw some more seed down on it.
Right, so if those are your feelings, then it would be wise to collect the $2,000.
Yeah, to make sure he does it, you know?
Yep.
Because what's, if he don't give us, he's never going to do it.
Sure.
Then there's, there's a memo dated July 15th, 2024, from our engineer. And then there's minutes of November 6th, 2024.
And Madam Chair, that memo, it's item two in that memo that I was referring to.
Yes. And you.
Board of Vote was conditioned.
You did, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize you, don't worry. Because this packet is so thorough, I just appreciate it, Brian, so much. And everything of interest, he didn't just give us the minutes, he highlighted the paragraph that you should zone in on, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's like, I understand it so much more clearly now with this packet. So anybody that is interested in this matter should really look at this packet, get it from Brian, and have it printed out in color, because the yellow highlight was excellent. And then November 6th, 2024, there's some more information, those are minutes, and there's some photos. There's also a plan, is that pertaining to this? Yes?
Yes. And what I may do is add an additional plan for the next packet.
Thank you.
Yeah. That plan is just kind of showing the stretch of the road, so.
There's some emails. And that Form D covenant, is that, that has to do with this, right?
Yeah, that's the initial covenant that was recorded, that I believe was released as a result of the tripartite agreement.
So I think we have everything here in this one packet, all together, so thank you. All right. So we have a member of the public that would like to speak on this matter. So please state your name and your address, thank you.
Timothy Michael Dorsey, 86 Blue Castle Drive. I, about the culvert by Blue Castle Drive and Carriage Road, it borders Carriage Road by the butts. Now, that's for the drainage, goes into those culverts, and it's supposed to drain water, right? Is that how it works?
Yeah, and it's supposed to take out nitrogen, too.
Okay.
That's what they took, you know, where they're.
That's why it's supposed to be seeded.
I'm not going to mention any names, but my friend and I went over there, he's an engineer, we looked at such, it hadn't rained for a month, and the two drains closest to Blue Castle Drive, with that culvert closest to Blue Castle Drive, were completely filled with water, so they're not draining. And then the further one, go, from Blue Castle Drive, headed towards, to Grass Road, the concretes are foot above the grade of, of the drainage swell, and then the drains on top of that, so it's like, it's like 14 inches above.
Well, that's how it works, though, it fills that up, and then any, oh, it's supposed to go down from there.
Yeah, well, you can, you can, it can not rain for a month, and then the drains are still filled with water, they're not draining.
Right, okay.
So.
And maybe the water table.
To differ on the engineer's analysis, that's, that's correct. I mean, anybody can look at it. If it doesn't rain for a week, it should drain, right? And it's filled with water, so obviously it's failed.
I don't know where the water table is there. You know, in your yard, the water table's not too far down from.
I, I have a well that's 58 feet below grade.
Yeah, but that's a well. The water table's still could be five feet from your thing, you know?
Okay.
But that, that's could be the problem, you.
And then the tripart agreement is associated with all the special conditions of such permit, is it, is it not? Yes, it is. Okay, so there's one condition of the special permit that I'm really interested in, and so isn't the people that bought into Aquay Highlands, because I guess there was fine print that they didn't realize, and when they did realize, they do not want to be, to perform Special Permit Number 34.
Okay, hold on, let's just, we're going to get to it, okay? So, so the, the two things you just said about the drains, right?
Yeah, I'll look at it again.
Yeah, if, if you could write that out.
I'll write that out, I'll send it to you, I'll give it to.
Email it to Brian.
I'll give it to Mr. Tobin, isn't it, Mr. Tobin?
Yeah, and then, is that okay if he emails that to you? And then we'll get it to our engineer and make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, yes, no problem.
So, condition, would you say 34?
Yes.
May I read it?
Go ahead, yeah.
Yep, "The above-mentioned draft declaration of protective covenants and restrictions in conjunction with the applicant's offer noted above to perform maintenance, leveling, and grading of the entire length of Blue Castle Drive to improve the road condition also included the following provisions. A) The Aquay Highlands Homeowner Association Incorporated may admit any owner of property situated on Blue Castle Drive as full member of the association, provided that the owner agrees to subject his property to this declaration of covenants and restrictions," end quote. "Including payment of an annual assessment." And B) "The Aquay Highlands Homeowners Association Incorporated may admit any owner of property situated on Blue Castle Drive as a limited member of the association, provided that such owner agrees to pay a proportionate share of the expenses associated with the maintenance of Blue Castle Drive and proportionate share of the association's administrative and operating expenses."
Okay, great. Well, let's just cut to the chase, and these people are responsible, if there's a $25 rock that needs to be put on the entire length of Blue Castle Drive in any location, and it's $75 in labor to do so, they're responsible for it. This is the four corners of a legal document, it cannot be changed, interpreted, there's no expiration date or anything. The last five homes of Blue Castle Drive is the Aquay, I mean, the Mary Ernestine Carter subdivision. I reached out to the homeowners association, requiring four tons of three-quarter minus crushed concrete. Mr. Moran, Moran laughed at me and said I was on my own. But I have a legal document here, signed by every, everyone on the planning board. This is a contract presented to the taxpayers, the constables of Mash, Mashpee, and it's signed, notarized, and everything. Mary, you signed it, actually, you drew up the document, didn't you, Mary? Well, you signed it.
Not this one. So, yeah, this was drafted, this was drafted a while ago, and.
With no expiration date.
It can't be, that's correct. It can only change if the person who holds the special permit, right, the, that applicant or their whoever.
Assigned.
Assigned, okay.
I hold such document, you presented it to the taxpayers.
No, no, that's a legal term, I'm trying to be legal here. The applicant can come back and modify it, but otherwise, it can't be modified.
Well, we'll be there against that.
They're not part of that, that association, though.
No.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, we're on the road, and that was, we, I was living there.
Yeah.
I agreed to such conditions, I did not appeal the decision because of such conditions were in place. Now, we're not going to change the rules of the game in the middle of the football game, we're playing the game, and these are the cards that were dealt to me. It's a legal document, I'm going to uphold such legal document, and that, I'm not trying to cause any waves, you guys dealt me the cards, I'm playing them.
Okay.
There's other conditions here, but this is the major one that I'm concerned with.
Okay, so if, if we want our engineer here live as opposed to on Zoom, when would that be? When would the next hearing on this matter be?
I don't know when Ed can be here in person.
Yeah, if he's, if he's free on the 30th, we're having a, a special meeting, then. We're planning on having an additional meeting in April on the 30th.
April 30th.
If not, it would have to be in May.
So I motion that we continue this.
Yep, we can.
Till April 30th.
Do you have any more comments, Mr. Dorsey?
I'm just going to say, since this Aquay Highlands, I never came to a meeting at Town Hall before, it's been going on for like almost 10 years now. There's still all types of problems, there's piles of dirt, everything, right? Mr. Moran continuously schedules these meetings, he says he's going to be here. At the last minute, nine out of 10 meetings, he cancels up. Okay, so he's always playing whatever he's playing, but.
I appreciate that you're here, and I, I wanted to just.
I'm here as a resident, I've lived on Blue Castle Drive for 26 years.
And I wanted to have this item discussed, because you were here.
I appreciate your time, me, I appreciate you letting me speak, and, and I'll be here the next meeting. When's the next, when's it going to be on for the agenda?
You don't know yet.
March, April 30th.
All right.
Yeah, we can put it on for the 30th, assuming Ed's available.
So it's going to be either, so it's going to be either the 16th or the 30th.
Depending on whether Mr. Pesci can be here live.
Is there, is there a reason that Zoom would not suffice? I mean, we want.
It's, Karen, you would like to have the engineer in person.
Well, I think that's what you wanted, Brian, or you thought it was proper.
Well, I think it's appropriate for him to be here. I'm okay either way. If your preference is for him to be live, then the 16th will not work, as in in person.
I'm, I'm fine if he's on Zoom or live, just I like to get this matter resolved.
So.
He likes, he didn't attend it.
Yeah, let's put it on for the 16th, so we can.
So the chair will, will put this on the agenda for the 16th, okay?
Of this coming up 16th?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much for your time, have a good evening.
Thank you. Anybody else on this matter?
Madam Chair, if I could just make a point of clarity.
Yes.
That was actually a finding that was being read and not a condition. Just wanted that to be on the record.
Okay. All right, all right, moving on, the ADU S, Special Town Meeting warrant, Article 24. So that's in our packet. Thank you, thank you for getting that into our packet. It's going to be on the, it, it's the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw regarding accessory dwelling units. So it's on the warrant. I think the SLAC Board voted to recommend passage, and the FINCOM did, too. We're going to have our public hearing on the matter.
Next month, next week, two weeks?
No, on the last Wednesday of the month, because of, because we had to get it in the newspaper with enough time for people to see it. So that's the 30th, correct?
Yes.
And do we have a start time for that public hearing?
7:00 PM.
So that's going to be a 7:00 PM?
Oh, excuse me, the hearing itself is 7:10, the meeting opens at 7:00 PM.
So we do have a little bit of capacity for other items on the agenda, but we'll.
So we're going to have a meeting the third week, and then one for 30th?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're having three meetings.
This month.
In April.
So is that called a blue meeting?
Yeah, yes, the blue meeting. Okay, so read up on that, and we'll be accepting public comment on that, and then voting to make a recommendation to Town Meeting.
Okay.
The housing production plan, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I checked with the clerk's office, and the room was open, and we booked the room at 7:00 PM, so I'm not, what time is the voting, does anyone know?
Is it that whole week? So it might end.
April 20th through May 7th, the whole week.
So they have the machines in here, right, then?
Well, they didn't have it on the calendar in the clerk's office, so.
So. So, you can, you can hold the public hearing in a different room. Not a different address, but a different room in the building. You have to, we just have to post that on the doors. So if the town clerk won't let us use this room on that evening, because they're set up for voting, we can, we can take it to a different room, a meeting room in this building. We just have to say that room change on, we have to post that room change on all the entrance doors.
So we won't be televised if we go in a different room, though?
Well, we could, I don't know, we might be able to.
What about this, put the curtain wall up?
They might, that's what Lynn is saying, that we might be able just to.
And then, because we're not going to be that much people, I wouldn't think, you know?
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll check with the clerk's office.
Right.
I mean, when I checked prior to putting out the public hearing notice, the room was open.
We can still have the public hearing, the address is the same, we just might have it in a different room. Right now, it's, it's in this room, and, and it is until further notice, so.
Sure.
You know? Okay. Okay, so housing production plan. So the Affordable Housing Committee is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, right?
Madam Chair?
I have my social calendar here on the.
Are you going to go any further on the housing production plan?
Not really.
I ha, I found something that is, I think, very, very interesting that we need to know about.
Okay.
Okay, I'll just pass it out. To tell you what it is, the Cambridge, Mass City Council, by a vote of eight to one, passed an ordinance in February this year that ended exclusionary housing for single-family houses only. Now, you can now build four-story apartments anywhere, pretty much, by right, and six-story apartments by special permit, of which 20% have to be affordable. It seems like that's the wave of the way things are going, and this is. affordable. It seems like that's the wave of the way things are going, and this is one of the most unusual things. It's the only one in Massachusetts. The population is 118,000 people originally, which was kind of shocking to me. The ordinance was only going to allow 3,500 units in 15 years. Now, they're going to permit 3,500 units in 15 years. And in another report I read, that the realtors, the developers are going around and trying to parcel, create some houses, you know, sell these houses, these two, we'll tear them down, and we'll build apartments right there, because it's, it's just the way it's going. And of course, the one dissenting voter was worried about the changing of the character of Cambridge. That's what's going on there.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's shocking because it's saying we're going in a different direction, not necessarily here, but the world is going. I mean, Cambridge is beautiful. I can't imagine a six-story building in the midst of single-family houses. Maybe on Elizabeth Warren Street.
Yeah, no, I worked there, her house.
Well, you know, it's interesting, they didn't do an overlay, you know, like, like a part of the town?
Yeah.
It'd be over there, the Somerville-Cambridge line, that part, they probably do, you know, that's, but not where Elizabeth Warren lives, not, nowhere near there. Remember when the bussin' was going on?
No, I don't.
All right. The bussin' was going on, they put the bussin' over to Cambridge, right near where Elizabeth Warren's houses, and they farted, and they got it to put out. But they were telling Boston, you got to have bussin', you got to have bussin'. That's where Garrity lived, over where Elizabeth Warren lived. So they're kind of...
Oh, I never knew that.
Oh, really?
Two-faced.
Interesting. So...
I worked on other houses over there for years.
Right.
That's what's happening. I mean, it's, yeah.
Yeah, so the governor's housing plan, I don't know if you guys have read it. I read a summary of it.
Yeah.
Governor Haley has a, they, they have an executive office for housing in livable communities, and they have a five-year plan. They always wanted each town to have a five-year plan, but the state didn't have one, so they did one. So that's great. And the growth that they want to see for the towns on the Cape for housing is 2%. Other places, I think it's, I think every other municipality is 10%. So if Mashpee takes that into its housing production plan, it's, it's similar number of the affordable units.
Right.
You know what I mean? It's the same number of affordable units that are in our housing production plan. That's the 2%. So you can see, because of our fragile environment, the state said that, no, the Cape does not have to match the same growth rate
Right.
as off Cape, because of our sensitive environment, and they're finally acknowledging that our ponds and our rivers and our embayments are polluted. And we all know it's, it's, you know, vast majority of our development has been residential development.
So...
There are no septic systems in Cambridge.
So while this is happening in Cambridge, I think we're, I think, I think it's going to be different down here.
So that two percent...
The population, 118,000 versus 15,000.
15,000.
That 2% that that eliminate 40Bs then, if we meet that 2%?
If we have that 2% growth, and it's all affordable, we will then be, have 10% of our year-round, year-round homes or units will be, will be affordable, and we'll have safe harbor from aggressive Chapter 40Bs.
Okay.
You can still have a Chapter 40B, but they'd have to be those local initiative-friendly ones.
More units put in instead of that 10%, like 20%, you know, if that goes into effect. The other thing they do...
I'll make sure the numbers are right. I'll make sure the math is right.
If the transit, Mass. Transit
Yeah.
goes in your town, you have to put housing up near the Mass. Transit, and they could be 10-story buildings. A lot of towns are fighting it.
And it's, Brian, you'll probably correct me on this one. It's not just that town. It's the neighboring towns. And it's not just a town that is, has a current station. It can be a town that has a planned station. So guess where it hit? Bourne.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people up and down.
Bourne was, is on this list to have a commuter rail station, and they have to do multifamily zoning. I don't know, is, I don't know if it's a half a mile around the...
I forget what it is, but...
There's a distance. It's about a half a mile, and it, it's the MBTA zoning. They call it the MBTA zoning.
15 units as of right. It's MGL Chapter...
15 units per acre as of right.
Yeah, it's MGL Chapter 40, Section 3A.
And that's why you'll see in the housing production plan, I have in there to have inclusionary zoning, which is, you know, if you, it's just an idea. It's not, it's, you have to change the zoning. So how to do, do a proposed zoning amendment, which would have a public hearing and go to town meeting. But in that way, if you had any multifamily zoning kind of put on you by the state, the town can require a certain percentage is affordable.
Right.
Whether we choose 5%, 10%, 15%, 20%, it's up to us. But that MBTA zoning does not have a minimum affordable percentage.
No, that's what scares the towns.
And I wrote in a lot of public comment about that, and, and...
Oh, you did?
Oh, yeah, I know, and I was calling our state rep and state senator and saying, you need to have a minimum requirement of affordable units in those MBTA areas, and it's up to the local town or city to put that requirement on.
Oh, are they even able to, though?
Yes.
Oh, I wasn't aware that they were even able to.
I think they can.
Because I thought that was part of why it was so controversial, was because there were towns who had actually hit their 10%, and now they still...
Oh, no, 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 no. This is, this is, this is a little bit different. This is a little bit different. This, this wouldn't be, you get a safe harbor if you're at your 10%.
No, I, no, I know it's separate. I know it's not 40B, it's 40A, but what I'm saying is there were towns that were in their 10%, and now all of a sudden, there's as of right multifamily zoning mandated by the state.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double check if you, if the MBTA zoning can have inclusionary zoning, like a minimum percentage of affordable units. Lots to talk about.
Yeah, I meant, I meant more of a maximum cap, you know?
Oh, no, no, the MBTA zoning has no maximum cap.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were saying. Sorry, I misunderstood you.
No.
The interesting thing about Cambridge, though, is to see how they're going to handle their sewer.
Their what?
Their sewer. Because I don't think, I don't think there's in MWRA. I think they opted not to be in MWRA, and then in 2022, I think they like temporarily joined for a reason. But I've actually heard scuttlebutt that their outfall pipe doesn't go far enough out, and so some of their sewer, and I don't know if this is just a rumor or what, but some of their sewer is washing up on Hummer Rock shores down on the South Shore.
Yeah.
Oh, great. Here's a statement about the 2021 MBTA Communities Act. A law aimed at making new housing close to public transportation is constitutional as multiple municipalities sought to challenge the law.
Right.
Yeah.
Milton was one of the big ones.
Yep. Yep.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, so the Affordable Housing Committee meets 6:30 on Tuesday, and I am hoping to have, I'm going to have to get that document, all those comments we made, approved or disapproved or whatever. I'm going to have to get that to town hall like Friday morning, by Friday morning, so that the housing committee can have it.
You're working the weekend.
No, he's not. I am. I'm going to be working, burning the midnight oil. But I was thinking of maybe setting up a time on Thursday of next week with the consultant.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I've already pinged her and let her know of the update. So in real time after the first meeting we had on things, I gave her our red lines and our comments to the barriers to entry when we tackled that portion of the red lines, and then a couple of days after the second meeting we had on it, where we had the workshop, I gave her a heads up and I directed her to the documents and gave her a heads up at, as like the nature of the changes from that page of 61 on. So my understanding is she's already working on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is...
And she understands that we're, you know, running a no-huddle offense here. Like, we want to get it done.
Is, is there another board member that would like to, if we, if we can get the consultant to have like a Zoom meeting on Thursday of next week, is there...
What's the date on that?
At the 10th?
Yeah, that would be the 10th.
Yeah.
Oh, next week, one week, April 10th.
I'm sorry. Hi, I'm in a meeting. I'm in a meeting. That was my daughter. I'm sorry. She's called three times. I just wanted to make sure everything was okay. But she did say that she loved me, so. All right, so, yeah, is...
Zoom meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we could do it with just me and one other member.
Okay, I, I think I can do it. I'll just confirm it. I'm pretty sure.
Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, it's fine with me. I'm not a Zoomer.
All right. So, and then I'll, I'll see, yeah, you can come right up, and I'll see if there's anybody from the Affordable Housing Committee that wants to join us. Hello?
Good evening. Mike Perkins, 94 Palmer Road. Madam Chair, could you just clarify the comments you were making about the governor's long-range plan or their five-year housing production plan, the 2%? Is that the goal that we need to get to, or is that the growth rate that we're supposed to achieve?
Growth. That's what I, that, I read a press release from the governor's office, and if I recollect correctly, they want, they want each town and municipality, each city and town, to have growth in their residential units, right? And if I remember correctly, off Cape, it was 10%, right? But the Cape is 2%. So that has nothing to do with that affordable housing 10%, you know what I mean, or subsidized housing inventory. This is just units.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Now, I haven't drilled down to say, is that our year-round?
Yeah, that's what I want to know.
Units?
Yeah.
Because 30%, as you know, 30% of our units in Mashpee are used only during the summer season, right? Only, only part-time. So that, you know, is that what they're talking about? But...
So it doesn't change the 10% goal that's in the housing production plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But what I'm saying is, I did the math back of the envelope, and I'll confirm it for you. I, what I'm saying is, if we bring on the number of units that we've, we've identified for affordable units, I think we match, we meet that new 10% growth goal. Do you know what I mean?
10% or 2%?
Yeah, 10%.
The 2%, the 2%.
So let me, let me
I think.
Recite back what I think I heard you say. If we, if we execute against the plan, the housing, Affordable Housing Production Plan,
Yeah.
we meet the 2% growth that the governor is referencing.
Yeah.
So that basically, don't build any other residential homes.
It's interesting. It's, it's interesting. If the town really focuses in on producing affordable units, we could, we might be able to meet this other goal that the state has for us.
Thanks, thank you for clarifying.
We'll see. Anyways, I didn't know you had to be a mathematician to be a community developer, but you have to be. All right, so that's, that's my target, is to have everything, all my comments in a PDF for
All right, that'd be better.
everybody by Thursday night. Okay. Any other comments about the HPP? And there, and I did, I, I have been promoting another 30-day comment period on the plan, once it's all done, just because there's so many changes.
Is that required?
No, but that's what I've been promoting.
Are you still promoting it?
Oh, yeah. Just because it's so different. It's just going to be so different. And then, and then it has to go to the planning board for a vote, and then it has to go to the SLAC Board for a vote, and then it goes up to the state for approval.
Right.
And I think that, I think it's just good to have a 30-day comment period. Proposed raise and replace bylaw, I have that on there just to kind of set some dates.
Well, Karen and I actually had an interesting discussion. Karen, you don't mind if I mention that?
Now that I already mentioned it, you don't mind, do you?
You could have said, a planning board member or a member of the public, but now you're out it. Okay.
That's a great tip. I'll do that next time. Unless it's Karen. I'm just always going to...
Trying to cut the blame on you.
So a member of the planning board, too late, too late, yeah, okay. We had a really interesting conversation about this, and the more that I understand, especially like what seems to be a relatively united voice of Pompanesset, even though there's a lot of issues that they're working out and bringing to the table, this is really more expansive than just raise and replace. What we're talking about is tweaking the entire section of the bylaw that deals with pre-existing non-conforming uses, which falls under MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6, and there is a host of case law interpreting that section of the statute. So this is a very, I want to be very clear, this is a very sophisticated project we are tackling here. MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6 is one of the least understood chapters in the zoning world. There are plenty of land use attorneys who don't even fully grasp it. It causes a lot of confusion for local boards, both ZBAs and planning boards, and that's because the Section 6 finding is like its own unique animal. It's not necessarily a special permit, though it can be. It's not necessarily a variance, though it can be. It can also be a custom-crafted finding created by the local board. So it's, you're dealing with that sophisticated piece of the law, which is state law and zoning, as well as our zoning code. The other two buckets you're also dealing with, based on the concerns that I've heard from the folks at Pompanesset, or at least that I've read, and I've been catching up on this because it has a long history, is it also interplays with FEMA in dealing with floodplain zones, as well as with the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act and CONCOM's local jurisdiction. And one of the things that Karen educated me on is that CONCOM has been kind of aggressively drafting a new regulation here, and I checked in with Drew after we spoke about that, and it's Regulation 25. It may actually be coming up for a vote shortly. So there's three, it represents the three, like the intersection of the three areas of the law, is what we're looking to do. Like, that's the context for the updating of the bylaw. So I just want folks to be aware of that. Like, if they feel like it's slow-moving, it's gonna, it's gonna be, and for good reason. Not just because we're getting input from the public, and, you know, one of the things that's on the table is exploring, you know, unique zoning for Pompanesset, given its unique history, as well as the desires of the current residents there, but also how to handle it outside of Pompanesset. So that context alone, like gathering public comment and really understanding their position, that is time-consuming. But then when you also realize that you are dealing with the interplay of three areas of the law, one of which is, is quite sophisticated, you just, you want to try, like, we don't want to rush this and come up with something that really just doesn't work and causes more problems. So I just want to state that.
That's absolutely right.
Brian, I mean, I never, you know, because I didn't have 40, Chapter 48, Section 6. I read it a few times, this section, and what I keep thinking is, first of all, it's really, it's very hard to understand to me. But secondly, I think, don't we really need the definitive case law that supports this so we know how to interpret some of these words here? Because that's what you said, is complicated in terms of it could be many things.
I think it's important. I think like having a general working knowledge of it would be helpful. Like, so in some of the draft regulations that I looked at for this, there are some provisions that just don't need to be in there because of 48, Section 6, and then there are some that clarify that. So I think like having that knowledge helps. I don't know if it's something that the board would want to delve into, like for discussion purposes.
No, you have to know it before you talk about it.
Yeah, like to not even, like if you're not legally trained to just like try and understand even the interplay between the case law and the statute, it's challenging for, I think, I made this comment in the beginning of my comments, like experience... like, experienced land use attorneys fumble on 48, Section 6, and like, don't fully grasp it. So it's, uh, it's, it's, it's a definitely a sophisticated statute. I, I, that, I, I don't say that to intimidate the board in any way. I know Karen's legally trained, so I'm, like, happy to have discussions with her regarding the case law, but I think if we bring it to the board and to the public, it's just gonna muddy the waters.
You know what?
Yeah.
Don't, don't hold back.
Okay.
Don't hold back.
All right.
Don't hold back. We've been there. We can do it. We can do it. And you, and we're gonna have to understand it anyways.
Sure.
Um, can I just
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, some direction? Um, there are some, some towns that have zoning bylaws that have tried to address this.
Of course.
One is the town of Dennis.
Yep.
And I think it's Ipswich. And our very first
And Falmouth.
I don't think Falmouth
Did that pass?
I, I'm not sure. I, I
Well, you, every town has to, every town has to have something that addresses 48, Section 6.
It's true, but I mean, in the way, in the, in the, addressing the things we're trying to address in this area of town, Ipswich and Dennis have some, some, have a try. And I, I remember Dennis because the very first draft that we looked at was really the town of Dennis bylaw, um, just kind of changed a little bit for the town of Mashpee. And that's the one we couldn't understand, 'cause it's like, it's like reverse language. We had a lot of trouble with that, and we, but anyways, we've been there. I, I completely agree with your analysis. Um,
So, what I was, what I was gonna ask
Do you, do you, do you want to work up maybe a tentative 12-month plan for this?
I think 12 months is very reasonable. I think trying to, I think it's possible to get it done for the fall. My concern is that it w- it will be 80% of the way there by the fall, and we'll just want to, if we set it as a deadline, we'll rush for it to be done.
The deadline's July.
Yeah. It's not gonna happen.
It's complicated. I mean, that doesn't, that seems
It's not, it's not gonna happen for the fall.
You're my idea long enough, but I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yes, so, so we have to, I'm sorry, Dennis.
Oh, go ahead, Ben.
We need to continually make progress on this.
Sure.
Our peeps are coming back for the summer. They're gonna say, "What have you been doing during the winter?" We, we, we need, and, and you just started. I mean, you'd already be, so, um, but we have to keep going, on, only because I don't, I don't want to make them feel that we're not gonna do it and force them into a situation that they're gonna do a citizen's petition. Do you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, no.
Like, I don't, I, I want to be their partner in this.
Yeah.
I don't want them, I don't want them to feel that we've abandoned it. We've been busy, we've been busy. Um, but
No, 100%, and that's not in any way to discover, discourage citizens' position, uh, petitions, rather, 'cause they, if they are well-crafted, they can actually be, uh, very, very valuable. But I am, as you mentioned, new, and so I'm playing catch-up just on what Pompanesset's perspective is. And it seems to be relatively unique in that, that it, they seem to be a fairly united vo- voice on a number of sophisticated, okay, never mind. I retract that based on
I, I'm not sure. I think, uh, I think that when everybody is here for the summer
Yeah.
and not everybody that comes to this in the summer can vote at town meeting, but that doesn't really matter. We, their opinions are important, too. I think you're gonna see it divides right down the middle.
Interesting.
Right down the middle. Um, I don't know. What do you think? You think it's
You're probably right.
Yeah. I think it's right down the middle.
I thought we already had raise and replace. We already voted on that.
We did.
Yeah.
So, I don't understand, what are we, we're just trying to make it better? Uh, what's the purpose of doing this now, if we already have it? I mean, goes
Because people aren't, aren't happy with it. There was a citizen's petition to get rid of the whole section, and that did not pass, but it, it got over 50%, but not 2/3.
So, but
So instead of going into that route, we, we, we need to get consensus so it will pass town meeting.
But it already passed town meeting. So, we, we're trying to change the way it's written? I don't understand.
I don't think what's written, what's in our, our bylaw right now does not address the comments that we got when we did the library workshop.
All right. But so, we have to rescind this?
Nope. We'd replace it, we'd amend it.
What, okay.
We're gonna allow raise and replace. I think what it is, is it's within limits.
Okay, so my next question is, so right now, if somebody at Pompanesset wants to raise his house and replace it, he can do it.
Yeah.
So, the longer it takes this, it could be already raised and replaced everywhere. They want it to be.
It gets complicated by the Regulation 25 and everything else that they're looking at, so that's what caused some of the discussion.
All right.
You know?
Well, I Regulation 25, if Regulation 25 passes, we might not
In reading Bob Orsi's plan from last June, or, or maybe it was December 1, I'm not sure, but they don't want to discuss Regulation 25 until the state writes it. That's what they're saying.
Right, yeah.
Um, my understanding from speaking upon, was speaking to Paul Columbo on one time, one occasion, was that he knows kind of what the, the rule is now, of course. He knows what Reg 25 is now. And we're allowed to, no matter what they do, what the state does, we can have a more restrictive
That's right.
Rule 25, if, if the people agree, if our people agree. We've got that age in re- in place part of the thing that they want. We discussed that. You were here for that, weren't you, Dennis?
Yeah.
You know, so, that may mean, you know, encroaching in the setback somewhere.
So, the town can override the state's mandates?
I ask our lawyer.
Sorry, can you say that again?
I'm sorry, our town planner.
Oh, I missed
Oh, for Regulation 25?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think so.
A home rule?
We're a home rule petition, so the, um,
All right, because, I'm thinking of the subject system. We tell po- people
Yes.
Five parts per million, they do 10 parts, and we can't do nothing, because that's what the state mandates, 10 parts. Because that happened to us a couple of times. It comes, well, we're meeting the state's mandate. We, we're trying to get your mandate, but we can't reach it.
But that's
That's something else.
All right, so that
This is wetlands, the Wetlands Act.
All right. I think they're all combined together, though, you know?
Um, they overlap, but the Wetlands Protection Act allows a home rule
I just a little confused.
Community to have, to have wetland regulations that are stricter than the Massachusetts Wetlands Act.
Dennis, one of the issues is the floodplain.
Right.
If you're in the velocity zone or the AO zone in Pompanesset, the, the law is that you are not allowed to count lot coverage that's in, if your land, example I gave you, 4,000 square foot on upland land, 4,000 square foot lot, but 2,000, additional 2,000 is wetlands.
You can't do it.
That's 6,000. So your, your lot coverage could only be 25%,
Yeah.
but it can't be 25% of 6,000.
Oh.
It has to be 4,000, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, that the ZBA has, on a number of occasions, allowed it to be, count the 2,000 that's in the wetlands, so you could build a bigger house.
That's why I was gonna add to the ZBA's gotta keep on
It's, it's really, I find it very complicated.
Yeah.
But
All right.
You know, we just have to kind of work through it in layers, and when I read this Chapter 48, 6, I said, "Oh, jump back." This is not light reading. This is not light reading at all. But do you think you could give us
They, they understand that lot cover issue. They're looking for a little, little flexibility in the setback issue.
Yeah.
So they can still build a, a, a
Yeah, and that's exactly where 48, Section 6 comes into play, because it deals with
Pre-existing nonconformity.
It's pre-existing nonconforming uses, but then it also deals with what to do when you want to ex- uh, excuse me, structures and uses. They're more concerned about structure than a use, right? Because they still want single-family, but for, uh, it's how to deal with when they, you want to, um, expand or alter that. And that's why it's really not just raise and replace. It's
All right.
Right, because raise and replace you can do within the footprint, you know?
Right.
Yeah. Now, if, if we need more resources, right, to get this done for next May, right? If we need time with town council, if we need a consultant, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, you know, you need to let us know. Um, because there might be, I mean, these people were very passionate about changing this zoning bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yeah.
They were. And they were smart, though.
And they're, and they're a smart group, um, they're taxpayers, whether they live here year-round or not. Um, and so, we might be able to ask the town manager for a budget for something like that. Um, so, you, you let us know, um, if, if we need, if we need to get you help on this, um, you let us know.
And we might need, well, we need face masks, too.
And
And helmets.
You can have a planning consultant to do the charrette, you know what I mean? Not make the, not write the final bylaw, but you, you know what I mean? Um, do the charrettes and hold the, the public outreach and getting the comments and trying to build consensus, you know?
I, I think in that, that rather lengthy thing that Bob Orsi wrote, it kind of speaks for the public. I'm sure they're not just speaking
That definitely represents
What?
But it does speak for PBA, pretty clearly.
But does it speak for the rest of the people?
It, it, I'm, I, my, my, my feel is that that speaks for 50%. I'm not sure about the other 50%.
So
And so part of this is to build consensus, too.
Yeah.
So, with the other 50%, are they in a singular group, and if, if so, is it in opposition to
I don't think we've done enough, I don't think we've spent enough time with them to know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a general idea at all of what some of the thoughts there are in that group, or?
I want to build, but I don't want McMansions.
Well, I think
So if you, if
I think
So I've had a lot of door knocking down there. You know that. Everybody knows that.
No, I think there's some overlap there.
I mean, it's like
What's that?
Isn't, isn't there overlap there, then? Because I thought that was in part
Well, uh, they are, the PBA is saying they don't want McMansions either.
That's right.
So I don't know if they're saying the same thing that the other 50% are saying.
And I, and I do want to be
How many of those places aren't part of the PBA over there? They're separate communities. They're not all included in the PBA. Like, Wilson's Grove is not part of the PBA.
All right, yeah, right.
So, but they're speaking for the PBA, actual PBA.
Yeah. And, and I do want to be clear regarding those themes, like, wanting to build, like, you know, for things like aging in place, et cetera, but not wanting McMansions, um, and wanting to consider FEMA, as well as the Wetlands Protection Act. I, I, I don't want my preliminary comments on this topic to, anyway, uh, give folks the wrong impression. I feel like those are very attainable goals, and it's just a matter of, like, really pinning down those goals, making sure that they are the goals, and then navigating the path forward, so.
I, I, I think that your analysis is correct. There's a reason why this hasn't been whipped out easily and there's a, there's a voting history, right? Um, there's been some, uh, votes by town meeting that have changed things, um, and some votes that have failed, so.
All right, my question, what is a McMansion? I mean, is a 5,000-square-foot home a McMansion or 10,000-foot square home?
It all depends on your perspective.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Depends on the size of the lot.
You could, you probably should have a number, like, a squ- no more than a 6,000-square-foot home or something. Because, like, my house is, what, four, 1,600 square feet. The neighbors, just with that raise and replace, went, got a 3,600 square foot. It, a huge house. It, it's a nice house, but it should have been somewhere else.
It feels, it feels out of scale.
Yeah, it's like, why would you build that?
You know, just right here, on this second page, I mean, let me just read you this, where, where we're kind of, I'm having an issue here. Um, let's see, I don't need, I don't even need to give you the sentence, but here, "That such change, extension, or alteration shall not substantially be more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood." That's not what our bylaw says. Our bylaw says substantially, not substantially more detrimental.
There you go.
And then the judge, I guess in 2228 waiting place, said, "You have to substantial," to what?
To what, yeah.
They add neighborhood, but that's not what the, the 48 says.
There's like, all these
Yeah.
Case laws going on right now, too.
That's probably
I don't know if you've read all of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've seen some of them. Yeah. They're interesting.
There are some very interesting legal arguments going on at the same time. All right, so, you're gonna get us a work plan?
Yeah.
All right, so that, uh, okay.
I mean, I like the idea of keeping
Because everybody's coming back, and they're gonna be knocking on your door, Brian, going, "What's going on?" All right, good. Um, so in our packet, we have some materials from Osprey Court Covenant Release.
Yes, so I had a conversation, um, with the applicant's attorney today, and they want to table this. Um, if I were to punchline it, it's the cluster development provisions of our zoning bylaws, which require a confer- uh, conservation restriction
Right.
To be accorded
Right.
Uh, prior to being able to pull building permits.
Right.
Um, I spoke with Robert Mills, who's the applicant's attorney, um, and he's, um, contacted, uh, three nonprofit organizations, I believe three, or a handful of nonprofit organizations, um,
They can't hold it themselves?
Quotes. Uh, not, part, a portion of the enforceability provisions have to be held by.
Oh, thank you.
The land can be held
All right.
Under subsection 6C, the land can be held, um, by the homeowners association
But the conservation
And the enforcement, yeah. Uh, has to get
Okay, so they're working on it.
Yeah, so they, they've, they're, they're waiting on some outstanding quotes before they, uh, make a final decision. So they just want a little more time.
And I think the native, do they know that the Native Land Conservancy will hold it?
I think that's one of the folks that he's reached out to. Yep.
I just learned that recently.
Brian, if, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, the Conservation Trust, um, okay, it's in, you say it's in the cluster subdivision. Uh, it, it speaks of that in the cluster subdivision. I understand it's, it's held by a nonprofit, but I don't really understand, I know it's for perpetuity, but I don't understand what exactly they do, how do they calculate how much, uh, it, that the, uh, the co- developer would have to pay that person or that, that entity, that nonprofit? How, how does that work, actually?
So, you, you pay them to maintain the land in open space and to enforce any violations thereof?
So, you mean, as a nonprofit, you know, the, the parties in the nonprofit die, and the successors just continue for perpetuity?
Well, yeah, nonprofits are typically set up as either corporations or trusts.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I'm just asking, if we didn't have a Conservation Trust, garbage would be on the land, it would be
That's one of the things they're meant to enforce, like dumping trash, burning things, doing anything that's not, you know, protecting the land effectively, or protecting the open space.
And what other kind of entities, other than cluster development, need a Conservation Trust?
When we buy community preserv- money with community preservation money? And the town cannot hold that. If the town buys the land
Yeah.
With community preservation money?
Yeah.
We cannot hold the conservation restriction. Town council.
Okay.
New rule. But like, the town bought some land, and i- i- isn't some of that in the Wildlife Refuge?
Yeah.
So they have, you know what I mean? Like, they take care of it. All right, um, okay, Mashpee Corridor improvements on Route 28. Did they say when they wanted our comments by?
Um, yeah, I think it's in the letter. I think it's 30 days, uh, from the 14th, but we didn't actually get this until
Leave the road alone.
We got this after the meeting on the 19th, so that's why it's in your packets, uh.
All right. I have color photos of this in my car. Do you want me to go get them?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna, we're gonna take, like, a three-minute recess so I can run up to my car and
Hey, on 151, they cut all those trees down. Was that to put aside?
You know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the vice chair in charge. You guys can continue to talk. I'll be right back.
Why, like, you know why they cut all the trees down?
On 151?
Yeah.
I, I assume it was because of a spent, expansion of the walkway or something, but
Okay, they're making the walkway.
A lot of trees.
A lot of trees, and they were nice, healthy trees, you know? But, and then I see they, they planted a couple. Yeah, and I'm thinking, oh, that's like, they put the road in, two years later, they dig it up to put the pipes in, instead of putting the pipes in.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you gotta, you gotta wonder.
Yeah, you know?
Dennis, this is trees on 151 by the rotary?
No, all the way up to Andy's Market. All of Mashpee, it's all.
All on that right-hand side going out.
And on the left-hand side, they did pass the high school.
Yeah.
It was substantial number of trees taken out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't comment on those. I know with this section by the rotary, they're putting in that shared use lane, so they're, that's.
Shared use path.
An extra five feet. Uh, but we can wait for Mary to get back before talking about that, but.
Well, how the self.
It like it happened overnight.
Oh, yeah, I said, what's going on here?
Yeah, I know.
I thought they were gonna put another lane in.
Well, yeah, it looked like, it was, it was big.
Yeah, I said, oh, that'd be a good idea, you know? I wonder how the self is doing. Be 10 games, right?
Yeah.
If they win.
So why are they cutting down?
Let's maybe put a sidewalk or?
Put a sidewalk?
Yeah, but they cut more than enough trees to put the sidewalk in. Yeah, it's me. Now, 151 is a state road or is that the town?
I think it's a state road, isn't it?
Alright, yeah, this is a state project.
This is a state job, right?
But they're working and have been working very closely with DPW.
This helps.
Yeah, that's.
Brian, do you understand what they're talking about in the letter?
Um.
Can we just read it?
If you wanna read the letter, you can, I mean, I have a general understanding of the project. I spoke to both.
You look at the map, when you read it, you, you can understand it.
Yeah.
So Brian, if you don't mind, bring, bring us, bring us through this.
Sure, so this is a letter from Sand Tech, who I believe is engaged directly by the state. This is a state project. It's at the, the rotary right by Mashpee Commons. Where 151, Great Neck Road and Falmouth Road all intersect. If you look at the diagram that's in the meeting packet and now in large print and color in front of us, which is fantastic, the red outline are the, the red outlines the project limits. So that's why it's kind of the outer boundary. That's the area where they're gonna be doing all the work. The blue lines are sidewalks. So if you look southerly, there's a sidewalk going from Laurantide up to, geez, I forget which right here.
Okay, the blue, the blue.
There's a sandwich shop and, yeah. And then there's a sidewalk, so that's on the easterly side of Great Neck Road South. There's a sidewalk on the northerly side of Falmouth to the northeast of the rotary itself. And then there's a sidewalk on the westerly side of Great Neck Road to the north of the rotary. The orange is a shared use path. And so my understanding is that's for bikes and potentially overlap with cars. It's like a bike lane.
So that's in the road?
It's on the outside of the rotary, uh, going around the entire rotary.
Good luck with that.
And, yeah, extending out for a portion of the way on Falmouth Road. And extending out for the majority of 151 in front of Mashpee Commons, but ending before Mashpee Commons ends. And then it also extends southerly down Falmouth Road.
So, I mean, I like, I like the sidewalks. And I like the, the shared paths that are not crossing the islands close by the rotary, do you know what I mean? Do you see how that orange is almost encircling, it's, it's circling?
It circles the whole rotary.
Almost the whole rotary. And I think that, I think they really need to come and engage the public on that. Because I think that's gonna slow down the rotary and might cause a real safety issue. And we're, we're, we're in vision zero. So we're, we are trying to have no accidents on the Cape. We have a plan for vision zero and I, you know. I read, I know this is gonna be a weird story, but I read a book once about dogs, okay? And dogs, city dogs, okay? City dogs don't cross the street in intersections where humans do. We cross at the busiest areas where there's lots of left turns and right turns and everything. But dogs, they go out of the intersection and cross because it's calmer there. I'm seeing that we're gonna be encouraging people to cross the roads right where it's the busiest.
And Mary, the, the shared use path is for bicyclists and pedestrians. I mean, I see this as an accident waiting to happen.
I, I don't think this is gonna fit in with, to our vision zero goals.
They're like the bridge to nowhere, I mean.
Right, going down by.
Go down 28 going to Hyannis, they end.
Bridge to nowhere.
It's this big, so people can, once they get past that bike path, the cars are gonna hit them.
Well, they, they do that so that they can, the next project will carry on. I'm, I'm much more concerned about this. That's true, we can say it's the bridge to nowhere, where do the, what's their plan to connect the, the endpoint of these sidewalks and paths to, to what? Anyway, they might have an answer for that. They might say, well, that's gonna happen in the next phase or whatever.
Next 15 years, go to Hyannis.
Oh, Mary.
Hey, Robert, how are you?
I just wanna chime in here on the rotary. I participated in a number of meetings at the library on the rotary some years ago and provided that. Uh, I also mentioned, I had a lot of discussion with Tom Padula about the rotary when he was still planning, a planner. And one of the, because it's congested and they got pedestrians and bike lanes and, and people not even knowing how to use a rotary properly in the state of Massachusetts. I had proposed to use a very common use instrument that they, I see in Arizona, I visit it, intersections, they have pedestrian tunnels. They go from one side of a busy intersection and the tunnels are also for multi, you know, for bicycles and so forth. So my two cents is you wanna have vision zero safety at firsthand, build a tunnel around or under the rotary.
Under, you mean dig up the ground and?
Yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about.
I know what you're talking, yeah.
It makes sense, but it would be.
It's a lot of cost.
You're talking drainage.
Probably tremendous cost.
I'm thinking.
Drainage, that whole scenario.
I'm thinking homeless people.
And, and stuff like that.
Homeless people, no, that would be. No, I, I live in the city and as a pedestrian and a bicyclist, you avoided the tunnels.
Yeah, I mean.
Exactly what you're talking about.
There's no cars in the tunnels.
No, but people, they're dark, they're dark and they're isolating and as.
There's, there's no cars, only killer clowns, so.
Thank you, I didn't, I didn't wanna say it. But, so, so that, that falls under alternate passage through the, through the rotary for pedestrian and bicycle traffic. I think that, I think the retrofitting with respect to the, the striping, I think that's where this community left this discussion. We had a big discussion with the Cape Cod Commission on this. And we opted not to do these crossings right at the rotary. I don't know what you call them, legs. We opted to retrofit it, you know, spruce it up a little bit, it needs a little maintenance, stripe it. And not discuss pedestrian and bike crossings. One, literally one of the ideas was to bring those crossings out, out of the rotary to calmer areas. But that even didn't get incorporated into the final recommendation from the Cape Cod Commission. So I don't know if Sand Tech has looked at the, that study, I'm sure they have.
It don't seem like they have.
But.
They are working with DPW and DPW is very much aware of this study. In fact, I spoke with Ms. Laurent today as well and she mentioned that study. And they've been, they have been having weekly meetings with DPW, so.
I just don't understand with no geometric alterations for the rotary itself, how they're gonna have that shared path? It looks like it's going right through the islands.
The shared path is 10 feet wide.
Yeah.
It's going right through the physical islands. You know, there, there's, there's physical islands, you can see them, they're triangular, it's.
Oh, at the, at the, the starting point of each roadway?
It crosses Great Neck Road over an island. It crosses 151 over an island, Falmouth Road over an island and Great Neck Road South over an island. It's drawn right across an island. So are they getting rid of those islands? Cause it says there's no geometric alterations. Or are they just gonna stripe it?
Yeah, they would need to create a pass through at a minimum, you know?
The one nice thing I have seen at the rotary is when people that are locals see that somebody needs extra space in the rotary, I find that people back off. And I have seen bicycles go through there and cars all stop. They just let them go through, so, um. But yeah, I think that we find this problematic. What do you guys think?
Oh, yeah.
I personally don't, wouldn't want bicycles or pedestrians there.
I think they should go around, avoid.
Yeah, I mean.
It's safety, it's about safety.
You think it should, the crossing and the pathway should be further out from the rotary?
I mean, you can, you can get from Great Neck, you could say you can get from Cooks to Laurantide by avoiding the rotary entirely. It's perfectly safely if you cut through. If you ride your bike through the commons where Stop &amp; Shop is and you ride your bike through the, uh, the main section of the commons and you come out through.
John Fisher Road.
Right, yeah, you, you can avoid safely, it's, it's quiet, it's.
Okay, where do you come out? You go through the commons, I'm following you.
Yep, and then you cross and you go through to where Roche Brothers, Roche Brothers is and all that, and then.
You get, you come out on 28?
Yeah, and then there's already a crossing.
And go down the street, turn left at Roche Brothers?
Yep.
Or on this, on Donna Lane?
Donna Lane, turn right and you go on the beach.
And then there's a crossing there already that folks use on Great Neck Road South and then.
So what is the purpose of being, having a bicycle and pedestrian path here? Is it, somebody wants to, well, I guess I answered my own question. You might wanna go down one of these roads here.
People, so remember we wanted to do the greenway?
Yeah.
Right? So when you look at the town, right? And if you, if you have all of our open space in green and you, and you zoom out of the town, you can see there's beautiful open space north of the rotary and south of the rotary, but no greenway through the rotary, right? And that was the whole thing, was to develop paths to kinda cross, um, kind of across from like the fire station. Do you know what I mean? Like use that intersection, there was, there was this whole big spiel. But to, to get the passage, this, these green spaces, these huge green areas connected safely. Because that was one of the comments.
Yeah.
Remember, that was, I mean, this is going back like 10 years. That, that's one of the comments was that bicyclists and pedestrians and hikers, right? Can't get through the rotary safely. And I don't think this, this solution is gonna do it. I think it's gonna encourage, um, people are gonna say, oh, see that there's a multi-use pathway through the rotary? And they're gonna say, oh, this is great, I can go through the rotary. And we're just throwing people into the danger zone.
I agree.
I think this is, I think, I think our feelings are so strong on this. I think Mr. Sand Tech better come in and see us. And I think we should, I think we should let the board of selectmen know that we have serious concerns about this.
I'd rather see them take that money and put a nice water fountain in the middle of the, middle of the rotary with something, something nice.
Welcome to Mashpee.
We should do something in the middle of that, you know? But.
So is, is, is that a plan? Do we have consensus on that?
Paris of America.
Yeah, no, just.
That we have serious concerns.
Have a turtle.
What about a gurgling cod?
Huh?
What about a gurgling cod?
Yeah.
Host.
A falcon, town mascot?
Yeah.
Is it okay if we say this is completely ridiculous and we don't hate it?
Yeah.
As opposed to serious?
I agree with you.
Okay, so what were your words, Lynn? That we, we do not like, we hate this plan.
Yeah.
Let's just say it. We hate this plan, we think it's ridiculous and would like them to come in and make a presentation to us. And I think we should give the, the select board a heads up that this is something that we do not feel, we do not feel this is in line with our long-term planning for the town. We think this causes a, a hazard.
Yeah.
Definitely.
It's gonna squeeze the roads down like on Falmouth Road with that, it's 10 feet wide, so. It's gonna squeeze it even more when cars come in, come in one side or the other.
Poor Michael from Sand Tech.
Cause they can't go.
Thank you for asking us for our comments, but yeah, invite them in for the next meeting. And if, if Catherine Laurent wants to zoom in, you know, they can zoom in if they wanna zoom in. And I think we should invite the select board, um, you know?
Put that on like for the next meeting, number two, so they don't have to sit here all day.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is high, the priority.
Let's do this as soon as possible on the agenda. Do we have any public hearings that night?
Uh, do not believe.
I don't think so, so we can, we could, we could schedule this for like 7:05.
Right.
Has the select board seen this yet?
I don't know.
I mean.
But they are going to now, cause I am going to let them know and let them know that we're, we're gonna try to get Sand Tech to do a presentation. I mean, if the select board wants to, wants to host a meeting, that's great too. I just, I just want the planning board to be participants.
It doesn't work if you were in Laurantide and wanna go get ice cream.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the one part that actually works, the sidewalk from Laurantide over to.
So that was, Lynn Barbie noted that, that some of the sidewalks are, are an improvement, that's true. And I, I believe that, you know, about 50% of this plan is advantageous to the town and the other 50% could cause a real big problem.
So what you're saying, you think the sidewalks are good, but everything else not?
I, I'm not sure that this, that this drawing is correct.
How do you, um?
Because the orange, you see how.
Get around that, yeah. Where's, where are the cars on that?
I mean, are they really serious that these multi-use pathways are gonna go over?
No, they probably cut those islands out.
Right, but it says here, no geometric alterations are anticipated in the rotary itself. Well, that's not.
Not from a, keep it a circle.
Maybe that's, but, I mean, to get rid of the, the islands, I think we need to have a real big discussion about that. Cause I see those islands as a safe place to slow your car down and know that nothing's gonna hit you.
Yeah.
If you have a multi-use pathway in that safe place, where the heck do you stop before you go into the rotary? Do you have to stop twice? Do you have to stop at the shared path and then the roadway?
All I can see is bikers going around the rotary thinking they have the right of way and somebody's not gonna see them. They're gonna get hit every day in the summers.
They're gonna get killed and that's the end of that.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna cut the islands off based on what they say here, geometric improvement.
Well, it'd be like right here, there's an island right in this corner here. And if somebody's walking, trying to cross, you gotta stop twice.
Yeah.
Same, same thing, the island's still there, it's just, there's a cutout for someone.
May, maybe.
Give you a safety line.
Yeah.
Yep, I think we need to know that, if, if, right, if they're gonna cut the pathway through the island, get rid of the whole island or have people. get rid of the whole island or have people have to bicycle over the island.
Yeah, they're gonna cut it by, by virtue of what they say, geometric improvements to the split islands. So they'll, they'll be moving, they'll be cutting them, I'm sure.
But there's no plan, like it's just, this is, this is, this is, this is like what I would make on my PDF, you know, program at home. This is, we need more information to make sure our peeps are gonna be safe. Sound good?
Yeah.
I mean, we're so hap, we're so happy that Santech and DOT are working on this, but I think we need to give them some, I, I have serious questions about it at this point. All right. Uh, Chair's report, I have no additional, anything to report out to you guys. Town Planner's report.
Good job, Brian.
Who's a town planner?
The Harbor Review Committee met this week.
Sort of being mesmerized by meetings before.
It's been a long day. The, the Harbor Review Committee met and, um, they're looking to have a draft plan in front of the Select Board for their meeting on May 19th. So that's just something to keep a lookout. And I believe that their hope is to then finalize the plan. Excuse me, the Harbor, Harbor Plan Review Committee or?
Harbor Management.
Dale's on it, he should be talking. But, um, I think they're looking to have a finalized plan for July. So paying attention to the May 19th meeting, Select Board meeting, if you're interested in the plan for the Harbor. Very good idea, yeah.
May 19th, okay, great. You're gonna get people. Yeah.
I believe it. Oh, and then in your packets, this is a relatively straightforward application. It's just for, in fact, it's really in front of the DEP, they're just required to give notice to the Planning Board and the Planning Board's required to receive comments from the public on behalf of the applicant. But it's not as if the Board votes to approve it. But at 2 Ned Bessie Road, they're replacing a seasonal dock. There's been a dock there since the sixties. If you, if, or if any of the members of the public want to comment on that, they have thirty days from March 20th, which is when we received the public notice, which was also, I believe, printed in the enterprise. And then other miscellaneous items, oh, there's an update to knock about. Knock about, as you know, put in some riprap to help with the erosion control. They also, Pete really went ahead and went the extra mile for the short-term solution and put in some sediment control mats as well. So he's made even additional improvements, even though we were all okay with what he had done already. Then, yeah, I guess just the decisions that we voted on last week, or last, at the last meeting rather, two weeks ago, for both Willabon and Island Pickle have been filed with the Clerk's Office. Notice of decisions have gone out. Yeah, it was a pretty, pretty interesting experience and process for Willabon especially. Because apparently one of my predecessors decided to be extra careful with the notice requirements and go beyond the statutory requirements. So under the statutory requirements, which is 40A Section 11, you have to give notice to direct abutters, folks who are across the street and then a abutters within three hundred feet, like a abutters to a abutters within three hundred feet. But notice also went out to everybody that has property in Willabon, which is a special permit that dates back to the eighties, yeah.
Sealed the envelopes here one night.
Yeah.
We, we, we did that, we stayed after a meeting and helped Tom Fadulla. We stayed here for like an hour.
It's like seven hundred and eighty envelopes.
Yeah.
So I wanna, I do wanna give a very special thank you to Christine and to Tammy in the Town Manager's Office as well as Pat down in Health. Because, you know, having been involved in land use for fifteen years, I've never seen notice go to more than like two hundred folks in a town, in a city. It's a different, different story. So I personally did not.
Yeah, they were condominium.
Well, yeah, and there, it's also Mashpee's unique provision of the bylaw, which allows you to add land to the special permit. And the special permit goes back to the eighties.
Yep.
So it's like a significant percentage of Mashpee housing stock that got noticed. So yeah, very special thank you to all the folks who helped me.
Yay, thank you.
Stuff envelopes. And my assistant, who is starting next week, missed the notice project of a lifetime. She probably would have quit if I had given that to her as well.
That's wonderful, so you, you, you're getting your staff person, that's wonderful.
Yeah, and then that's the last announcement that I have is, uh, um, we're moving to Jahu. So the Jahu conference room downstairs is where the Planning Department will be starting on Friday.
Oh, okay, you're not upstairs no more?
Nope.
That's the best office.
I know, I like that office, but Jahu's actually pretty nice too. Yeah, nice mahogany conference table and whatnot, yeah, so.
They have windows?
Yes, there are windows.
All right.
Nice room, it's better.
All right, um, Board Member and Committee Reports. All right, the Cape Cod Commission. So I'm on email notification for the Cape Cod Commission for their meeting notices and I recommend everybody join up for that. On April 10th at 1:30, the Committee on Planning and Regulations is gonna have a meeting and they are going to look at the Development Agreement Regulations. I know. So that's Thursday, April 10th at 1:30, the Cape Cod Commission Office. And then you can also go to their website and they, you can remote in. They have a link for you to remote in. Um, and the item is Development Agreement Regulations. The Cape Cod Commission staff will review with committee members potential amendments to Chapter D of the Cape Cod Commission's Regulations of General Application Development Agreement Regulations governing the review of development agreements. So, uh, which are intended to clarify and streamline the development agreement process, period. Committee members may ask questions and discuss with staff. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna try to get their draft amendments to the development agreement. I'm thinking of taking some time off from work and attending that meeting as the Chair of the Mashpee Planning Board. Our, um, our, in, our experiences, our experience with a proposed development agreement was horrific. It was horrific, the way that it was introduced to the Planning Board, the town, et cetera. And, um, I, I think that people from Mashpee should attend who remember that development agreement process and really let them know how horrific it was. I mean, we had people, we have fifty people in the room and people not allowed to do public comment and it was, it was just horrific. And, um, the Cape Cod Commission was gonna be a member, it was gonna be a three-party development agreement. And I, I think they could have shown a little bit more leadership to build consensus about that pro, about that idea. You know what I mean? Like I felt like they came like here and then they left. Then we never saw them again.
No.
We never saw them again and it got heated. And, um, anyways, um, I think it's an important meeting, it's, again, it's April 10th at 1:30 PM. So, um, I'll send it to Brian, he can send it all out to you. But I think it's, I think it's important that Mashpee, you know, speaks up about that process. Anyways, um, next item, Charter Review Committee. So the Charter Review Committee held a public hearing. They submitted their proposed amendments to the Charter to the Select Board. The Select Board did not put them on the warrant. So, um, anyways, um, hopefully they'll go on the next warrant. And then it's followed by a vote, yeah, it's followed by a ballot vote. So, um, anyways, that's what happened with that. The Community Preservation Committee did meet and we are, uh, we sent a message through our Select Board Liaison, which is Michaela Wyman-Columbo, to the Town Manager and the Select Board, talking about the land purchase on Nathan Ellis Highway. Was it 475? 475? And that, um, the Community Preservation Committee is available to help staff with devising a feasibility plan for that land. That land was, um, the intent of that purchase was for recreation and open space. There is, um, wetlands resources on it. There's a dry riverbed that's been earmarked by some plans to restore. There's a beach, there's buildings. The, um, Community Preservation Committee has administrative money that can be used to, um, plan, for planning for something like that. And we're available to help in any way, so that's. Yeah, you.
Do a public hearing for the CP.
I, I, so, go ahead Lynn.
We're doing our public hearing in the Community Preservation on June 24th because we have to have articles ready for the October one. It seems like day of tomorrow, it's June 24th.
So I'm hearing from Lynn Barbie in the audience that the Community Preservation Committee is going to hold a public hearing on June 24th, 2025. Any news, Brian, on that land on Nathan Ellis Highway? No, okay, all right, I didn't know it, you had heard about it at all, okay. Design Review.
There'll be a meeting next Tuesday and I'll be happy to report, it's been a long time.
Plan Review.
Same.
Environmental Oversight. No meeting. Historic District Commission.
We're, we're waiting for history to be made.
Okay.
We have another meeting.
All right, this correspondence in your packets, I don't have any additional comments or topics.
I'm actually most adjourned.
Excellent, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.